To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Roll call noting members Schroder, Wilder, Smith, Beck, Canings are present. Can I get a motion to approve, excuse me, approve the agenda? As presented, adding item number 20. Motion by member Smith. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second by member Beck. Discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right, with that, we will move on to item number four. Scheduled presenter, food service Sarah Erickson. Easy.
Just throwing stuff at, I'm so short it falls over. Thank you.
Excellent.
Alright, so in the spirit of Paul's show and tell, I do have cookies in the back?
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome. I have more to talk about, this is for me too? Okay.
Just in case I have questions.
Sounds good. So, just so far in March, we have served 2,732 breakfasts. That's to also include 127 extra entrees, which is usually just staff buying a breakfast sandwich or something simple. For lunch, we have served 4,082 meals, along with 102 extras. And then our current focus is right now, our cross-training everyone in our kitchen. Not to make them professionals in every aspect of it, but to just make sure that they can adequately fill in anywhere if necessary. Another thing we're focusing on is our summer program. So, our applications are due in April. That's been a huge program for us if we can take, continue like we did last year with the meal pickups. And we just had our health department visit. We passed. We have our report if anyone wants to see what it looks like. And the violation we did have before was taken care of, so that's good, which was just, there was a little residue on our meat slicer. Future things that are coming up are electronic menu boards. So, maintenance has the brackets, the TVs and everything ready to go. The concession one, the TV is up, we're waiting for an iPad mount. And the kitchen menu boards, we're waiting for cabling to be ran. But maintenance has everything ready, just that cabling, and then we'll be able to show pictures of what we're serving, which would be great for the little kids to see what's actually on the menu. Some things don't sound great to them, but if they see it, it's actually much more appealing.
Good idea.
Some other things that are coming up is we are actually doing a test kitchen with Chef Howard in April. So, that will get the rest of the staff their continuing education credits. That'll give us time to ask a chef some real questions. He's going to give us some menus, teach us some tricks, knife handling and other sorts of things like that. May 2nd is school lunch hero day. I'll have to think of something great to do for the girls. Maybe they can wear capes for the day. Next year, we really have to focus on our meal pattern guidelines. Because lower sugar and added sugar amounts, especially to cereal and yogurts, has to be adjusted and changed. And lower sodium guidelines are coming, so we're going to have to look at all our recipes, adjust them. And we also have to make sure that because of the Buy American Act, no more than 10% of the goods purchased can be imported. We don't have that problem so much, but it's a lot of things like bananas, mandarin oranges, and out-of-season fruits and vegetables. And then next year, we're really going to focus on more of a scratch cooking, or speed scratch cooking, which is a really big cost savings for us in the kitchen. So, it's kind of all we have going on, besides our serving line, but that's coming up later.
So, while we got, this is Erickson here, number 15. At our last finance and facilities committee meeting, we reviewed and we talked about the kitchen buffet or the student line service stations. Our understanding is back in 1990 when this building was built, we bought secondhand or pre-owned units. And we've, they've exceeded their life expectancy, so later on the agenda number 15 is to seek out bids. Sarah has some informal bids already, but we'll reach out some other vendors. Anticipate at our, at an April school board meeting, hopefully we'd stand ready to approve those. And that will come under the FFE, Furniture Fixtures Equipment, of the building bond referendum dollars. But we don't have enough information to make that decision tonight.
Good. All right. Does anybody have any other questions for Sarah?
I just had a quick question. I don't know if this is part of it or not. Summer meals, and I read something in one of the MDFT emails about there being an issue with the grants for the free meals for people with their grants for being only like a two-year program and schools were looking at a shortfall? Is that, does that apply to the free meals that were?
I think what you're reading is the legislative actions related to compensatory revenue. So, our compensatory revenue is based on our free and reduced lunch applications. And there's paper, well, it used to be paper form only, and then there's also direct certification. A lot of schools during COVID, direct certification is for when families go in and apply for healthcare. And if they meet the criteria for healthcare, schools were automatically notified that they would qualify for free and reduced lunch. So, it eliminated that paper application process.
Okay.
So, that's a hot topic in the legislature right now, and it's called compensatory aid based on free and reduced lunch applications.
We're not in, I know there's.
If we, if we have to go back to paper-only applications, we will lose significant amount of revenue.
But I just want to make sure that we're not, there are some schools that are having a shortfall of quite a large amount of money because of this program, these grants that are ending.
If.
We're not in that.
So, in the governor's proposal, there's a thing called hold harmless. So, if the governor's proposal that he presented to the House and Senate, if that goes through and the hold harmless clause continues, that would be best-case scenario for Ogilvy. If the governor's proposal doesn't go through and we don't have the hold harmless clause, we're going to lose a significant amount of revenue. Because we benefit from the direct certification of free and reduced lunch application kits versus solely relying on people filling out the paper application. So, very big topic in the legislature right now, both the House and Senate.
Okay.
Is that, is that what the food service people are hearing too?
The only program I'm aware of that's changing is the Farm to Fresh One, which was a USDA program that they are cutting, but we didn't use that.
That's a federal program?
Uh huh.
Yeah.
I just got one more question for you, Sarah. Not to put you on the spot, but how's the first three months going?
Um, good, I guess. You know, I have big shoes to fill. Lynn has been here a long time.
Yes.
I do have someone out on surgery right now, so they've been really trying me. But I've been able to fill in and help out where needed, and things have been going smoothly. We've all kind of settled in now.
Good, good. Just haven't heard how the role is going for you, if there's.
It's probably a good thing for me then. Do you have a question?
With your changes that are coming, are you tracking usage rates then?
Usage rates as far as how much we're using of the imported goods?
No, as in student usage, using the, the food service. As in figuring out what, what's liked and what isn't.
My cook, main dish gal, is very good about keeping track of what the kids are liking, what they aren't liking, what meals work best together. And we've been really kind of putting our heads together and making what we would call a cycle menu for next year, which we're working on an eight-week rotation, where once a month we would put in like a try-it day because they need to get exposed to other things, or like a holiday meal where we do the turkey, or for Easter this year, we're going to do hot beef sandwiches. So, something else that they can try, but also kind of giving them more of a variety. And we're going to focus more on less desserts, but fun alternatives, you know, fun breads and things like that.
Nothing like ludafisk and cold potatoes?
No, we asked if they eat liver and onions, no one bit, so, yeah.
I won't be there for lunch either. All right. Thank you very much, Sarah. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Where are the cookies?
All right, with that, we'll move on to item five, open forum. Is anybody here for open forum? No one here. Reports. Principal Sue Davis is not here this evening. She had a family emergency to attend to. And yeah, we do have it in our drive, so it's available to look at. The report is there. So, we will move on to students, school board member.
So, for basketball, it is ended for both boys and girls. The boys ended their season with a record of 1-23. Their last game was against SJP and ended with a loss score of 97-56. The girls ended their season with a record of 14-13, and their last game was a 76-72 loss against Swansville, and they played hard until the end. Good job to both the boys and girls for their good seasons. For the musical, on Wednesday, we had our first performance for the students during school. The following performances for the next few days went as planned, and our last performance was yesterday. Overall, the performances went well. Thank you to everyone who attended and showed their support. Baseball practice along with softball, softball and track has started. Baseball will have their first game on the 8th against East Central. Softball will have their first game on the 3rd against Uppsala. And they will soon leave for their trip to Florida on the 27th and be back the 2nd. While in Florida, the softball girls will play four scrimmages that will count as official games. Track has their first meet at Rush City. NHS had a blood drive on March 5th, which went smoothly. There were six first-time donors, as well as three students who donated, but we unfortunately did not meet our goal since only 25 out of 43 units were collected. We have also been selling vaults during lunchtime in order to fundraise, fundraise money for future NHS activities. FFA has three teams going to a state convention at the end of April. Region banquet for them is also coming up, and they are starting to plan for Ag Day. Manali's report. Student council hasn't had much happening since their last meeting, just a few meetings, but no upcoming plans. Yearbook club has their deadline coming up, so Becky has been helping kids finish pages. Onnit had another successful shop day during the showcase. Mentor, mentors for the mentorship program have continued to meet with their kids. And then the program prom committee has decided on the location and finalized most of the plan for the night. If I remember correctly, it's April 28?
26.
26. The cost is $80 per person, and at first, I don't remember all the details, I'm thinking off the top of my head, but we're going to place some more, I think, for the actual prom, having dance until, is it on here?
Grand, grand events center?
Probably.
Yeah. Having to dance until 7:00, coming back to the school, and then for post-prom, we're going to Trampoline Park. Is it in Coon Rapids?
Yes, Urbana Trampoline Park?
Think so.
I could go to the office and grab the sign-up form.
The Urban Air.
Urban.
Urban airs.
Don't remember.
That's a lock in till the wee hours of the morning.
So, it's going to be offsite this year?
The post, but then they come back for door prices.
Oh, sure.
And back to the school.
Cool.
No, it's all back.
That's it? Does anybody have any questions for Haley?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, board members. Who's got anything to report? What happened? Nothing. Uh, I will just state that I know everybody receives these emails, but if anybody is looking for some spring workshops to attend. Dan, have you taken any of the phase training workshops that MSBA offers?
No, last time I, they were offered, I believe, if they're the same workshops as last time, I wasn't available.
Good.
But yeah, I need to look into that word.
Yep, it'd be good to do, I see we have three and four. I thought it was, I thought there was more than that as well. And officers workshops as well. So, maybe it's just three and four, because I believe one and two were held during the conference. So, and also in, I don't know, that was the officers one that was interesting. So, yeah.
There's some webinars, the budgeting webinar, negotiations webinar.
Sure.
Are they, I'm seeing some emails from MSBA here. Are they supposed to stick out for me in some way?
Um, only if they stick out for you.
What's that?
Only if you see it, so they stick out. I believe this one was sent on the 20th was when it was mentioned. So, anyhow, that's coming up. Other than that, I really don't have much. It's been quite on our end. I know that we're probably awaiting a word from both unions on negotiations. So, that'll be coming up, but other than that, I do not really have anything. Uh, all right, move on to other district employees. Go ahead, Beck.
Good evening.
Becky Coleman.
Yes, Becky Coleman. I am going to just add on to what Sarah mentioned about the concession stand. So, the iPad mount just came in, so, like the end of the day last Thursday. So, we'll work on getting that mounted in there, iPads ready. And so, what I'm going to do with that is, it's going to be wireless to that TV that's mounted out there. And the mount is, the one we're buying, it's secured to the wall, and the iPad is secured inside the mount. So, the iPad will be in there all the time, locked. And I'm going to make it very restrictive, but open to any group that uses the concession stand to follow the instructions and be able to show whatever menu they have. So, if they're during, doing sports and running the concession stand, different prices, wherever, it's going to be simple. They just, it's the same technology that I do on the TVs around the school. So, just making a simple slideshow. Doesn't have to have more than one slide, just one screen showing their, what they're doing. Or what group is actually running the concession stand too. They could add that information wherever they want. Then, some projects that we have going on in technology, the lab project, Windows 11, that you have the information about for this evening. Also with E-Rate, that deadline's coming up, trying to grab some of those funds. We're on year 505, and then they'll hopefully renew it. Also, a testing is just around the corner with MCAs and NWA testing and FAST, so that's, there's prep work going on for that. And then the website I mentioned before, getting the facelift, and that's going to go live in June. We set a date to kind of get past the school year and at a time when people aren't maybe relying on it as much, just in case there were to be issues. And then on the Onnit side, Haley mentioned a few things. Also, we did set a date for our Habitat for Humanity trip. It's May 6. And it's going to be somewhere around St. Cloud, and we'll have approximately 25 students between Onnit and Mr. Haglund's construction class. And working on the permission slips and what we need to do to get that rolling, but it is set with Habitat for Humanity. And then also with Onnit, our 5K, I think I might mention that already, but that's May 10th. So, it is that Saturday after the Habitat for Humanity. And with Yearbook, just like she mentioned too, finishing up on those deadlines, trying to get some final pictures this week. And with the spring sports, a little less pressure because of that supplement that we're doing over the summer to have it available in the fall to give that, the final information from each of the spring sports that we never have at this time of the year. That's all. Any questions?
E-Rate is federal program.
From the USAC.
So, that's on the watch also, depending on federal decisions. We hope, we hope it continues.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Becky.
Thank you.
All right, Jeremy Tweet, community ed. I just wanted to add a few things that are coming up for dates and events of interest to inform you some of the things that are coming. So, we are doing a new program this year called Lions Care. You may have heard a little bit about it, but we're just getting the ball rolling, taking in jobs that could be done. What we're asking our 9th through 12th grade high school students to do is to go out to the community and serve instead of being served. They're used to being served and, and, and we want to get them out there serving. We're looking to help pretty much any individual family, businesses and town, things like that. But it has to be in the Ogilvy School District boundaries. We're prioritizing with the elderly, handicapped, just anybody who can't physically do the labor. We're expecting most of the jobs to be more yard-related. April 23rd in the morning, so we have some testing going on that day, but the 9th and 10th graders are not testing. So, we're going to take them out the morning of the 23rd and have jobs going on throughout the school district boundaries. And then on, be the next Wednesday, April 30th, we will have the 11th and 12th graders out doing the exact same thing. So, we're going to do it in two mornings, based off of our schedule with the testing. We felt like that was the best time to get our students out there, and so that's coming up. That's called Lions Care. And then the other thing that I want you to be aware of is Kennebec County, along with the Ogilvy Fire Department, EMTs, WELIA, the city's hospitals are getting together to do a mock bus accident at the Ogilvy Raceway. That will be the afternoon of April the 23rd. We are going to include as many of our kids as we possibly can. They've asked us to get about 20 of our students to be involved in the actual accident. And so, I've had two of our advocacies, my, my own advocacy as well as Mr. Gams. Those students have been getting waivers signed by their, by their parents to be able to participate. And then we're going to also then be recruiting any kids 9th through 12th grade that have any interest in police force, EMT, any form of medical in their future. They really want those kids to be there to be a part of it and hear the lingo and watch the process and see what goes on. So, I just wanted you to be aware of those events. Any questions?
Sounds like a lot of fun. That collaboration of the bus accident should be an eye-opener to some of these individuals, especially they're bringing a bird in for this whole thing, so that'll be fun to see.
Ambulances and.
So, that's going to be a really big deal for this school and for the kids to see that live in action. Luckily, there's not going to be an actual accident, but hopefully. But no, that'll be fun to see, and I'm excited that the, that the community help situation. situation is finally coming together, that we're finally getting some dates down, as long as we can get some, uh, houses that we can go to or individuals that we can go and help, that would be, that's gonna be a good thing for this school.
Yeah, we got about a dozen jobs lined up so far.
Sweet.
And we're just looking for more to come in, um, and I assume as more people hear about it, uh, we'll get more recommendations for more jobs, um, and we'll go from there.
Sweet.
Have you contacted the city at all? Like, I was just thinking, like, the public.
So, I was at the Lions Club meeting last Monday, um, and informed them, they know so many different people in the community and a lot of needs are brought to them. Um, so I just went to inform them of what was going on, so if they knew of anything, and even we're looking for people who can be, uh, job foremen at the site, because we want everything set up before our students ever get there, and then they're just told, this is what you're doing, this is how you're gonna do it, and they work hard to help out our people in need.
We're running low on jobs, I got about twenty trees to drop.
Well, the insurance agent, uh, for the Ogilvy School District does have a few limitations, that would be one of them.
I thought I tried, I thought I tried.
Uh, you and I can talk personally on that one.
All right, anybody have anything else for Jeremy?
Nope.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, Superintendent Ricky.
I'll just highlight a couple things off of Principal Davis' report, uh. She wanted me to mention Carl Perkins, our initial award going into this school year is four thousand one hundred dollars, and that's for our career and tech ed teachers. Uh, we were also received notification of an additional two thousand four hundred dollars for a food dehydration system for our ag food chemistry, so I believe once we receive that notification letter, there'll be, uh, a food dehydration system ordered. Uh, we may have to do some higher-end wiring for that, I think that takes a two-twenty. And what I think would use to be the ag teacher's former office is where they would wire it or set that up, uh, the food dehydration system. Principal Davis did submit to Minnesota Department Head of AdSys, which stands for Alternative Delivery Student Instructional Strategies Application, if that would come through, that would have specific revenue, that we could look at teacher support and paraprofessional support, but, uh, with the March seventh application deadline, we will not know until early May whether we receive that or not, and if we would receive that, it would help us with staffing, 'cause I think in the application she put in for up to two, equivalent to two FTE teachers and a small number of paraprofessionals, so we'll see if that, and that, that would be for non-special ed, non-Title One, different pot of money. Sound and Music was my first Ogilvy musical, thirty-seven students, cast and crew. That, that was, when you talk about a production, I mean, to orchestrate thirty-seven cast and crew to go on seamlessly, uh, um, very enjoyable, and that's not counting the adults that help out, that's just students, thirty-seven cast and crew. Read Act, uh, by August, next fall, we have to, our district has to assign a literacy lead position, and that's part of us to receive our Read Act, and every Minnesota school has to do that, so you'll hear more information from Principal Davis on that. Student Academic Showcase, great turnout, was great weather outside, gray weather parking, and, uh, a bustling day. Great meal by food service, and then for some of the people that came in late, they could stay and either do the public hearing on the four-day week renewal, or they went to the musical, so, great turnout. And a lot of, as we end March and go into April, it is Minnesota Comprehensive Accessing, and our juniors will be taking the ACT. So I wanted to catch highlights on that. Again, reminder, Minnesota Rural Education Association does the Tuesday morning legislative update, and that's by lobbyist Sam Walseth. I know it's at seven AM, you're on, those recordings are available, this is the time of the session where you want to tune in, and if you could look at those, it's only thirty minutes, he's very, very well-prepared update. And at the end of the legislative week, Minnesota School Boards Association does their Friday morning nine AM chat. Again, same thing, that is recorded, so it's interesting to get the start of the week and end of the week, 'cause this is the time of the year where we wanna look for companion bills, we wanna see that there's a House file and a Senate file, and then we'll touch base on the legislative timeline, so it's real important now to see that there's companion files, that there's something going through the House and the Senate, 'cause it has to be in both to get traction into the second half of the legislative session. And unless you have specific questions about some of the agenda items coming up on the agenda, that's all I have at this time.
Okay, does anybody have any questions for Kevin?
No.
Haley on Everdade asked, did you apply for the Minnesota School Board Association Scholarship? Oh, I was hoping that that was gonna be caught, I seen that come through on an email, and by the time I'd seen it, it was too late, so.
I put a note myself, we have a junior on, uh, I think the application process is very similar year to year, so I think we will start it in the spring before, 'cause, you know, it's right at peak musical time and, and spring finds that, so if, if they stick with the same application process and timeline.
Sure.
We should help our junior board members get on the front of it, so then it doesn't hit at March Madness.
Yeah, it is, uh, it's a pretty good opportunity for you to, I believe it was a five-hundred-dollar scholarship, uh, from Minnesota School Board Association. Anyhow, um, all right, anything else for Kevin? With that, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Uh, unless anybody wants anything removed, I'm open to taking a motion for item seven and eight and nine A through F.
So moved.
Motion by Member Smith, can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Member Beck. Discussion. Okay. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Move on to the action items, item ten, approval of February claims.
Motion to approve February claims in the amount of two hundred twenty-six thousand, two hundred and twenty-three dollars and ten cents.
Motion by Member Schroder, can I get a second? Hold on a second, second by Member Smith. Discussion?
Mr. Chair, there is another almost years gun and bomb check for one thousand one hundred fifty, and I believe it's more firearm safety, unless you want that double check, but I think it's the rest of the ammo and supplies for firearm safety.
Okay. Does anybody else have any discussion on the budget or on the expenses?
No.
Roll call vote, Member Beck?
Aye.
Member Smith?
Aye.
Member Wilder?
Aye.
Member Schroder?
Aye.
And I will vote aye as well, motion passes unanimously. Uh, item eleven, acceptance of gifts or donations, uh, nine hundred and eighty-five dollars, sixty-seven cents for elementary field trips from St. Paul and Minnesota Foundation. Eleven thousand for wrestling.
Mats.
Oh, mats from Ogilvy Lions Club, and five thousand for outfield fence safety topper for the baseball softball from the Lions Club as well, can I get a motion for that, please?
Motion.
Motion by Member Wilder? Get a second?
I'll second.
Second by Member Smith. Discussion? Again, thank you to our Lions Club for their generosity and donation and donating to our school district.
And there is an alum, I, I need to do a little more homework, there is a graduate of Ogilvy that's tied to that St. Paul and Minneapolis.
Okay.
Minnesota Foundation.
I was wondering where that.
That's why it comes our direction. So I'll check with the source, but.
I think we did that.
It's an annual.
I think we've done it in the past, yeah, and I forget who it's tied to, but thank you regardless.
Yeah, and for field trips, that's always very advantageous. All right, uh, any other discussion? Thank you again.
Yep.
Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Uh, item twelve, enrollment numbers as presented, can I get a motion for that, please? Motion by Member Schroder, can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Member Wilder, any discussion?
Do we decrease six, do we know reasons for that? Or why are they leaving?
Two households.
Okay.
Yes, we do know the reasons.
All right. So, okay.
All those in favor say aye? Aye, opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Approve, item thirteen, approve to seek quotes to upgrade district Windows ten desktops due to end-of-life support on Windows ten for the following to complete the project, and there's a whole list of computers there that are looking at to get replaced or refurbished. Uh, can I get a motion for that, please?
So moved.
Motion by Member Smith, can I get a second?
I'll say it.
Second by Member Wilder. Okay, discussion.
We have Ms. Coleman here, uh, thirty-four workstations are updating our media center library computer lab. Ongoing discussion, we started the discussion in the fall, it's went through Finance Facilities Committee. Twelve of the thirty-four media center computers will be higher-end, upper speed for our career and tech ed, so our classes that use CNC, the drones, those programs, we wanna make sure that they're high-end of that, we're also looking at exploring the idea of starting an esports team and those higher-speed, um, higher-end computers would benefit, uh, if we're exploring to do the esports. The other twenty-two out of thirty-four stations in there would be refurbished, recertified workstations, that would be Windows eleven, they would handle all of our district testing needs, would handle our benchmarking, if teachers wanna come in and use the media center lab, separate from the individual devices, they would, they would work well. This would come under the building bond furniture fixtures, equipment category. Item B, replace, uh, up to fifteen more computer workstations building-wide, and these are ones that are mounted in or used, uh, they would be like our Lunchline Cafe Terminal, uh, other locations, and again, that would be eligible for building bond furnitures, fixture, equipment eligibility. And then the last item is item C, and I'd be looking at, um, staying on our cycle of replacing with ten laptops. Now, laptops are not eligible for building bond furnitures, fixture, equipment dollars, but we've used other funding forces such as our REAP dollars and our capital dollars, and that's part of our rotation, but, um, the tech department had some preliminary estimates of quotes presented to the Finance and Facilities Committee meeting. Uh, the reason we'd like to look at this discussion to move forward is, uh, with the, just in case there's international supply chain issues forthcoming, uh, it would be good to act upon this, so we would ask, after looking into it, if you have question answers with the tech department, there are special meeting on Thursday night, that hopefully we'd be ready in a place to approve the purchase, to get those ordered, to ensure that we have the equipment on hand for a summer install. Did I miss anything?
You said everything perfectly, but if they don't have any questions, just tell me.
Mind me again on our, the Windows licensing, it expires.
October something, so, yeah, Microsoft won't support Windows ten workstations come October of this year. We are running some that are so obsolete that we can't actually upgrade them to Windows eleven. So that's why we are having to actually replace it, otherwise, uh, we've been able to upgrade Windows eleven on the rest of our machines.
So tonight is to seek quotes, and with that approval, tech department will verify with each of the vendors that we have working preliminary quotes with to see if what they've quoted us is still good, and double-check on if there's supply chain issues, so, uh, hopefully you'd be able to make a decision Thursday night upon verification of, if what we know already is, is still available.
Yep.
Okay. Any further discussion on that? Do a roll call vote on that, Member Wilder?
Aye.
Member Smith?
Aye.
Member Beck?
Aye.
Member Schroder?
Aye.
And I will vote aye as well, motion passes unanimously. All right, item fourteen, approve to seek price quotes for eight cameras compatible with our current safety surveillance video system. FFE eligible. Approximate projected cost, forty-eight hundred dollars, can I get a motion for that, please?
So moved.
Motion by Member Smith, can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Member Beck. Discussion?
Reason the number's eight is that would max out our current system without adding servers.
And, and recording devices, DVR.
So we have room for eight more cameras.
Okay. Any further discussion on that or questions? We will do a roll call vote on that as well, Member Schroder?
Aye.
Member Wilder?
Aye.
Member Smith?
Aye.
Member Beck?
Aye.
And I will vote aye as well, motion passes unanimously. Item fifteen, approve authorization to seek quotes for kitchen buffet stations, meal-serving units. Uh, FFE eligible, can I get a motion for that, please? Motion by Member Schroder, can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Member Wilder, discussion?
Completely done, fully installed, this will be more than a hundred thousand dollars. So, that's why we wanna, need a little more time to reach out to different vendors or that, and again, we'll have hopefully more information for you in April, but again, this was a priority coming out of Finance and Facilities Committee to, it, it's, it's time.
Well, thirty-plus years in the making, I believe it is time, yeah, I think, uh, I think this would be a great purchase, I'm surprised they haven't announced sooner.
And then I guess one question I have, are we still gonna get quotes on that cooler freezer unit? Is that gonna be in this, or is that coming later?
Um, I, we just got one quote. Um, I mean, Gary Lovitz is in town tomorrow, and so with the transition of Mr. Jacobs, there is a quote, Paul, Paul just got it to me, Paul Jacobs, to Matt, and so that's a discussion I need to Matt, talk with him, but I believe that would be a local.
Okay, and then there was a kitchen exhaust that we were.
That needs to be fixed.
That we were discussing during the finance meeting, so.
Yeah, that one, just, that needs to be scheduled and fixed.
Okay.
I think that was more of a, that came out of.
Right.
LTFM funds are.
Okay.
So then, we did receive one quote, and that should be available tomorrow.
All right, sounds good.
And I think we can have local providers do that in the district.
Yep. All right, any further discussion on any of that? Do a roll call vote again, Member Beck?
Aye.
Uh, Member Smith?
Aye.
Member Wilder?
Aye.
Member Schroder?
Aye.
And I will vote aye as well, motion passes unanimously. All right, item sixteen, approve and adopt the third and final reading of policy seven oh four, development and maintenance of an inventory of fixed assets and fixed asset counting system. Can I get a motion for that, please? Motion by Member Schroder, can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Member Smith, any further discussion on that? Hearing none, all the, oh, hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right, uh, item seventeen, approve academic calendar, approve academic. All right, item seventeen, approve academic calendar, approve academic year calendars contingent upon flexible learning four-day application renewal, approved by Minnesota Department of Education, can I get a motion for that, please? Motion by member Schroder.
I'll say it.
Second by member Wilder. So we need to approve. I'm confused as to why we're putting the cart before the horse here.
So we have an opportunity with this cycle of the four-day renewals, actually renew for six future years.
Correct.
Part of the, part of the application is, is you have to have a minimum of the next three approved calendars.
To go with the application.
With the option to go up to six, and there was parentheses, going for six would strengthen the application.
Perfect.
So, thank you to the business office, I think Brooke Stolz went ahead and looked up six future years, corresponded Sue Davis, Mr. Hoffner, and we tried to get narrowed down to two scenarios. Under current statute, we still have to start after Labor Day weekend, and we try to get done as close to Memorial Day as possible without going too far into June. So this would be a hundred and forty-seven student days, so basically the question is looking at how, when do you enter winter break and come out of winter break? And how does that affect at the end of the year? So put these up in the workroom. At the end of February, had the staff vote, sticky-dot votes, and they went through and looked at six years, they left notes, and if they had good notes or comments, revise and came those. So what's presented to you is based on feedback from the teachers or workroom, and six, I believe we can make minor adjustments year to year. But if
And that's what I was going to ask, I mean, we're still going to sit down and go through this calendar before we start a school year every year, right?
Yes.
Yeah, because I mean
But it's about this time of year, each year that you approve the
It seems like we always do minor adjustments, there's always a day or two.
There is, but it's nice to get at least a majority of it out of the way.
And there is a bill in the legislature right now, that for twenty-six and twenty-seven, when you get in the late half of the leap year cycle, when Labor Day weekend gets like, to like September seventh and eighth, that, there is actually a bill in there that if that would get passed by legislature, could change that, but under current statute, unless you're in construction, you can't start before Labor Day.
So.
Can I just ask about the February day, that Friday? Is that just to make the President's Day a long weekend? I don't, well, every year, there's always a Friday off in February.
So I, I can speak from other school districts in it. Historically, you come off of winter break, most schools don't do a break on Martin Luther King Day, because it's like two weeks after winter break, and depending on where Easter is, President's Day, President's Day weekend might be the only break between New Year's and Easter in some calendar years.
So Ross.
I was just wondering if people would prefer that day, like, on to our spring break, it makes spring break longer, but maybe you haven't gotten any feedback about that. I was just kind of looking at other school districts that I noticed have a very long spring break. Maybe that's not what
Oh, it makes it tougher for us because we're a four-day school. So we're missing all the Mondays already.
Yeah, so the question is, is how close on winter break, do you want to go up to December twenty-fourth on the front end? And there are times we could come back right on January second. You can't be back on the first. So you kind of have to look at when you start winter break and winter break is Easter, early spring or late spring, so. Yeah, with the four-day week, we have the flexibility always around Easter break to maybe add one more day to the Easter break, but then you're going to take it off of winter break
But it always has to, and it always depends on too, if we have any snow days in there as well. Well, that's the one disadvantage to having a four-day week, is that we have all those Mondays, we have all those days off already, so if you were to add all those days up, a lot there.
Well, I'll give you an example, if you flip up to twenty-nine thirty, that would be a year when you look at April. So if you're looking at the month of April, when you see that purple April nineteenth, that must be Easter weekend in April. There was a suggestion by a staff member, could we go to school Monday, the fifteenth, sixteenth, seventeenth, and take eighteenth off to create
Yep.
A five-day weekend. So as we get closer to twenty-nine thirty, I mean, you could, or
Yeah, and I suppose that, going back to that February, that's not really a day off, that's just adjusted, so we go Monday instead of, so four-day.
Correct, well, we got to take that, President's Day off.
But from, from January first to Easter, that's, that's the heart of the school year, that, that's a long haul. And President's Day is kind of the
Little bit of a breakup.
Yeah, I get it. Just curious.
Anybody have any other questions about the calendar? Calendars?
Again, with the renewal application, you can do just three years only, but then by end of twenty-eight, you have to have the other three ready, but they say that would strengthen your application if you look six years in advance.
And I guess I'm in favor of going as long as we can, because it takes significant time
Yep.
From our staff to put this together, so the least number of times we have to do it, the more money we save, so.
Yeah, it depends up here.
All right.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item eighteen, approve the renewal application of flexible learning year four-day school week plan to be submitted to the Minnesota Department of Education to be considered or approval by the Commissioner of Education, can I get a motion for that, please? Motion, motion by member Wilder, you got a second?
I'll say it.
Second by member Smith. Discussion?
So we're applying for six years and
Minimum of three.
Yep, so
Or a
And the ball's in MD's court to let us know if we can do it.
Yeah, you, you don't get to decide.
Right.
It's we, it's whether we submit and
We're just deciding to submit or not, and the state decides if we're allowed to do it.
When do you anticipate submitting it?
So we have to have approved minutes, so that's part of the rationale for the special meeting on Thursday. I'm open by no later than Tuesday, April first. If, you know, just making sure I got the approved minutes and I'll have, you have the proof read, I have to, there's some assurances, I have to proof read, you have to prove another, I probably have Superintendent Belshine, retired Superintendent Belshine do a proof read to make sure I didn't overlook anything. So the goal is to get it set off no later than April first.
And did they give a timeline of when we were hereby, if we're approved or not?
Had to be in before April twenty-first, and it said it could take up to at least forty-five days.
Okay, so a month and a half after.
So that's why it'd be nice to get it in, no later than April first.
Say disapproved, then we're in a scramble to come up with a new schedule for five
And you got to redo schedule, you got to redo a lot of stuff.
Oh boy, yeah, yeah. All right.
So the sooner the better.
Yep.
Yep.
Any other discussion on submitting the application? We'll do a roll call vote on this, member Smith.
Yes.
Member Wilder.
Yep.
Member Schroder.
Yes.
Member Beck.
Aye.
And I will vote yes as well. Motion passes unanimously. Item nineteen, fundraiser request, approve, spring flower bulb sale request submitted by Principal Sue Davis. Proceeds would go to the field trip fund. Get a motion for that, please? Motion by member Schroder, can I get a second?
I'll say it.
Second by member Wilder. Further discussion on this? Flowers.
Everybody would just
No money is handled internally, it's an online order process, you order and pay online and
I think that's where she's after here.
She knows what that's for.
Yeah, good.
All right.
All right.
And I believe the policy formers paper clipped that, so we got to, I don't know if it requires a signature if approved.
I think it does. Yep.
Oh, that's Benji, not me. For some reason. Oh, my Benji would have anything to do with it. All right. All right, any further discussion on the fundraiser? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes unanimously. All right, item twenty. Accept an announcement of names of applicants from the public to fill one short-term school board vacancy until special election can be held in the fall. Applicants listed in alphabetical order by last name, Carl Boudreau and Amanda Stevenson, can I get a motion for that, please?
It's removed.
Motion by member Smith, can I get a second?
I'll say it.
Second by member Wilder. Any discussion? So with this, upon approval of this, where are we as a board then, what are we going to do?
So at the, at the February school board meeting, when we received the, accepted the resignation,
Yep.
we said we were going to accept applications from the public. So we have done that, so now we have two applicants. So the question is on the two applicants is, you know, they were supposed to apply by email, and I'll double-check the postal mail tomorrow if anything came in postpart, but on our Thursday night meeting this Thursday, what to decide is, do you want to review those two applications, and as a board, select one of those two? Or do you want to learn more information, set up a, a special meeting where you have open meeting and do interviews to gather more information?
Sure.
You're not required to do that, but you can, you know, screen the application and the responses to the applications, the questions they have, and that could be decided on Thursday night.
Okay. Then we'll have that discussion on Thursday. Any other discussion on this?
Again, I will check the mail, but just in case somebody didn't do it by email or digitally.
Then we have these two individuals.
Yep.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right, non-action items, item twenty-one. Exploring proposal for esports through Ogilvy Community Ed.
Does everybody have the fact form for esports?
It's in their digital folder, if you have one, please have it. Thank you.
All right, again, Jeremy Tweet, Ogilvy Community Ed, looking at, basically been doing a lot of homework, a lot of research, looking at our student body, trying to figure out what are some gaps that we have, some areas where students are not participating, but could be participating if we had something that was in their interest levels. We have a, a high number of, of people in athletics, in the musicals, in speech dramas, in the arts, the muse, music, that was band and choirs, but we also have a bunch that aren't fitting into any of those categories, and we're looking, always looking for ways to get kids to feel more involved in the school, as well as be able to have some school spirit themselves, and, and be, feel valued, you know, and one of these, the things that's really popular right now in the state of Minnesota, it was actually first, kind of went nuts in, in North Dakota first, and we have over a hundred schools in Minnesota right now doing esports. What it is basically, in, in a nutshell, is, is online gaming against other school districts. We would be in the computer lab, competing against other school districts, we would have a GM or a coach that is working with these students, and, and really the reality of the matter is, is it's not the environment, the online environment that some of you may be used to, seeing your own kids involved in when they're on just an open online competition, that can be pretty cutthroat, there's a lot of things said on those that shouldn't be said, but in this environment, it's very controlled, it's competition between schools, school districts, and Fenworks is the company, it's out of Grand Forks, that runs this program. There's a state competition, competition at St. Cloud State for the regular season, which is the winter season. They have a fall season, which is kind of a warm-up for the winter season, and right now they're just about ready to start their spring season, which is basically trying to hone skills and kids getting ready for the following year. So it's kind of like a preseason, a main season, and a postseason, so kids can choose to participate in all three, they could just do one if they want, it's totally up to them, there'll be a registration for each one. So what we're asking today is for you to look at the bottom part of the sheet, these are the things we need approval for. We need a commitment of a thousand dollars annually for the school to have a team to participate. As a community ed director, I don't want to be going out every year trying to find funds to be able to keep the program going, so I'm looking for that commitment. I will also be negotiating that price. We are a small school district, they understand that, they're willing to work with us, I don't have, our first offer that they gave us for a cheaper price has expired, but I, I don't stop very easily, so I will keep working towards making that number smaller. The second commitment is we need a coach, a GM, so to speak, and, and that person, kind of doing the research around the state, most of the school districts are paying what would be equivalent to about an assistant track coach stipend, and so that's the number that I put down from the current OEA contract, so that's the approximate number, but of course, with negotiations coming up, this number is, you know, kind of just a starting point. One thing to add to this that I think is really important is there are a lot of scholarships out there in this area. Schools cannot really see kids when they're playing at home, so this gives an opportunity for kids to be seen, a lot of kids that go to the state tournament in St. Cloud, there's a bunch of schools that go, that's where they get to individually watch these students participate, and many of them are offered scholarships on the spot at the state tournament. So just one more ways, one more way we can help our kids kind of expand to beyond high school.
Is there a lot of interest here in the school for this?
I have not done that homework, because I don't want kids to get excited for something that's not approved of yet. Do I believe there will be, yes, I do believe there will be.
Is there an educational aspect or background to any of this at all?
No, it's more like a team sport, it's kind of like any form of competition, so if the baseball team's out competing against another school, it's kind of the same, same thing, same concept, we're a team, yep.
I didn't know if the games had any form of
There's eight different games, I have a list of them, but I don't have them in front of me, some of them are more educational-based than others.
Sure.
But I don't believe modern warfare is one of them.
No, that doesn't sound very educational.
And it's seven through twelve?
This is seven through twelve, priority will be given to ninth through twelfth graders, because we'll have twelve workstations, if that's approved, we'll have twelve workstations that are set up for this. Then if we have open spots, then we expand it to seventh and eighth graders after that. If it becomes very popular, then we move forward from there and make more decisions as If it becomes very popular, then we move forward from there and make more decisions as we go.
And it's in a growing employment industry. Just like if people wanted to be a teacher or an athletic coach, now people can be esport coaches or esport general managers or districts. So I mean, there's, it's a whole new area of employment opportunities.
So you're saying once you get the 12, you're full?
We will not have the capability tech-wise to go past 12.
So will you have a waitlist of some sort?
We will have to start a waitlist and then at that point we will come up with plans of how are we gonna grow in the future.
So I was gonna say, with that being said, being that it's community ed, you have the option of recruiting outside.
We do. We do. We will always be open to donations and, and help. I've also.
And you, from surrounding communities, you have the opportunity to pull those kids in to be involved in this program.
Correct. Correct. Ogilvy students would get priority, of course, but if we, we're the only ones in the local area that would be running this right now, which would be a, a huge bonus for us.
I was gonna ask, I was wondering if any other schools in our area were involved.
To my knowledge, not in the immediate local area.
How long is, um, is the season? Is it like any, like winter sports?
Yeah, it's basically like, uh, the, the sport seasons that we have right now. I don't have exact dates on them yet. Uh, in fact.
The same as wrestling or basketball?
Yep. Very similar to that. Uh, practice schedules can be different in this actually, because they can actually practice at home. We don't all, have to have all the practices here. Um, so it is a little bit different. We, we, we have flexibility on how to do some of the practices. Of course, we want some of them all together, um, but we do have some flexibility with that.
So the coach's contract would be for the whole year?
It would be for the whole year. Correct. And then for some reason, we had to do, uh, a combination, we would figure that out based off of if somebody else is already, already has a commitment and can't do the fall season or whatever it might entail.
Now Kevin, is this a presentation or are we giving him the go-ahead to do this at this time?
This is on a non-action.
Yeah, it's a non-action item, so all of us for Thursday.
Gotta decide the computer deal first.
Sure.
I thought, I thought we should purchase some computers first.
So Thursday, we can figure that out.
Sure.
Horse before the cart.
Yeah. Making sure I got my basis.
You know, as a, on a, one more thing, as a personal note too, my, my, uh, I married into two boys, seven and two, uh, as a young dad way back in the day. And my two-year-old turned out to be quite a gamer. Um, and I actually sadly kinda squashed his, he was very high-ranked in a couple of video games worldwide as a 14, 15-year-old and had some opportunities. And I saw it as not very valuable at the time. And so looking back at it, he had a lot of skills that I feel like I kinda squashed. And I don't want to squash our students if they have those kinda skills as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 22, discuss setting dates for school board vacancy interviews if desired. Otherwise, appointment determination at special meeting on Thursday. So how do we, so we're gonna discuss what we wanna do at this point? How we wanna move forward?
Well, we talked about if we had a large number of pool applicants, you know, how do you narrow that pool down? But so you're, you're in a situation where you receive two applications for one spot. So do you feel that you have enough working knowledge based on their applications to make a decision Wednesday night? Or do you feel that you need more information from the candidates?
What day are we meeting?
Thursday.
Thursday, so Wednesday, okay.
Did I say the wrong date?
I thought you said Wednesday there for a second. Okay.
Well, I guess what's your guys' opinion? Do you wanna do interviews or is the applications we received enough to take a vote on Thursday? I think that's what we gotta decide here.
I don't wanna really drag it out any farther, but I just want it to be fair.
Good, cause we still have to have an election in the fall.
Yeah, correct.
So this is only gonna be until fall.
So this is kinda like for April through, either April through August, October, November. And when we host, you know, if you have special meetings, we have to compensate the board members to come in to do the. Like I said, I.
My opinion would be, I think there's enough information here to vote, but if any other members wanna do interviews, I'd gladly sit in on it. It's up to you guys, whatever you guys think.
So regardless of who we select, either through appointment process or interview process or that, we still have to have an election in the fall.
And they'll still have to file their candidacy according to state law.
So we have to do this twice in 2025. Do you have an opinion, Kathy?
Well, I mean, honestly, I'm good either way, but I'm just looking at it as a typical job that you submit your application and then usually you get an interview at least, but.
Good.
I don't, I mean, I'm, I'm good either way, but.
And I'm fine with doing the interviews if we can, you know, we'll have to post another meeting.
Yeah, it'll have to be next week.
It'll have to be next week, more than likely.
I mean, can we get it done and then we can, at the April meeting, I mean, approve somebody?
I think, correct me if I'm wrong here, but once we appoint the person, isn't there a 30-day period we have to wait before they can get seated?
That's right.
And I think that's what we want to have.
If, if.
So ideally, I'd like it.
Yeah, if the public would petition.
Right.
That they petition that they disagreed with the appointment.
You know, and I guess.
So, so even with the special meeting on, then then 30 days, does that miss our April school board meeting?
Actually, that's how it'd be passed, our April. Because the 27th, it'd be passed our April meeting anyway, so we're gonna have that as a special.
So it doesn't matter.
What's your thoughts, Cory?
I'm good either way, but I understand what Kathy's saying.
Well, you're only seeing if they're written side of them.
Yeah. Okay. I agree. Let's have a interview process.
So do we wanna set that date right now then?
We can.
I mean, I might as well, well, cause.
Well, Thursday night.
Do it on Thursday? Boy, we're gonna be here a long time.
Do we, well, we better make sure the candidates can be here on Thursday if we're doing interviews.
Well, it doesn't mean you're interviewing that night. That means you're deciding to set up interviews and scheduling. Cause it has to be open public meetings, so you're gonna have to have a 72-hour notice. We just got the applications. Today was the deadline, I knew.
Okay.
I was ready to make a couple of dates.
Well, then we'll make that determination on Thursday, I guess.
All right, sounds good.
And then we'll move on to discussing the school board vacancy special election date.
So I checked with Minnesota School Boards Association, Anthony Snyder at Knabe County. So there's only two opportunities. It's the August 12th or November 4th. And she gave us the reverse timeline if you do either. Uh, both Minnesota School Boards Association and Emmett and Knabe County thought you might have a better turnout if you do it on November 4th, Election Day. And then the question was, is how soon can they get started? And it's my understanding it's the notes that, uh, actually I'll take the notes off of Thursday night's agenda. Newly elected board members, newly elected board members begin as soon as qualified. So that means once the election results are canvassed, they need to turn in that required campaign finance form. The district waits seven days for anyone to contest the election and then, uh, then there can be a certificate of election, oath and acceptance of office. So there is a chance somebody could be actually started by the end of November, if you did a November election. If you did an August election, there is a chance it could be started by September.
Okay.
So on Thursday night, you have to decide which date.
I'm in favor of the 4th.
Yeah, and like, like we were talking before you got here, we're not sure if there's a general election this year, if there's anything out there on the ballot, which would actually help.
Yep.
Sure would. I mean, we know there's gonna be nothing in August, cause there's never an election in August, so.
Yep. So either it'll be at our local halls or it'll be right here at the city.
Yep.
Okay. Good. Any other questions, comments on that?
So again, we're dealing with two things. We need a short-term interim appointment to get, if we're looking at November, uh, through the, serve through, at a November, then we are required because there's, and then make sure when we have that election is the length, the remainder of Director Hannah's former term. Which is more than two years.
Item 24, discuss the non-vegetative surfacing outside lane eight of track and inside perimeter fence to avoid weed vegetation growth and so the running surface is not harmed or damaged by mowing equipment.
At our finance and facilities committing, meeting, um, this got basically tabled.
Yeah.
If you think of the straightaway closest to the tree line and football field.
Yep.
Lane eight is here, there's the protection fence to keep the spectators off. You know, there's a little bit of the track surface and then there's like less than two feet of dirt and then you have the chain link fence. Uh, the concern is to go in there and I think short-term, we're probably gonna spray it with weed killer and keep it just bare dirt for this track season. But long-term then you probably wanna put something down.
Okay.
So we, uh, cause if you start running weed whackers, lawn mowers in that narrow strip between the fence and lane eight, either you're gonna put a lot of junk on your new surface or you're gonna wreck your surface or catch edges. And plus the fence, and it's probably not safe for the worker that has to do that. Now, the dilemma is, as we go around, obviously there's a hill. The question is, is if you think of that chain link fences, do we wanna have, whether it's crushed, you know, one of the, there was an informal quote for pulverized, I think crushed asphalt.
Yep.
So you went at the mole between the track and underneath the fence all the way around. Um, there could be other crushed materials as well, but my understanding is you probably take the chain link fencing off, put an underlayment down and then put whatever you're gonna cover it with, so.
Yes. My concern, the chain link is kinda close to the track, cause I've seen a lot of accidents in track in my day, which was a long time ago, obviously. But I would think something, I don't know if they still do shredded tires or anything like that, might be an option after it's, there's an underlayment done or something like that. But I could just see, we wouldn't wanna put like crushed rock there.
No.
The chain link fence is bad enough if a kid.
Wipes out?
Wipes out. You know, it seems like it's too close to the track as it is, but I don't see.
What's that stuff on playgrounds? Like that rubber?
It's a rubberized surface material.
I don't necessarily like rubberized, putting that down anywhere for the environment, but I also gotta think about the fact that running into the chain link fence is bad enough, let alone landing on rocks or whatever.
And this is where the finance and facilities committee got hung up too.
Yeah.
I guess, I'd like to see what other districts have around their track and maybe our AD could get some quotes on something similar to that.
Well, this would probably go right to the building, ground supervisor.
Or the grounds or whoever wants to get the quotes. I mean, if we can get two or three quotes on something, then we could make a decision.
I think short-term it's, it's probably gonna get sprayed with Roundup right on the fence and it's gonna take some hand labor to keep the weeds out for this track and field season.
Yeah, we definitely gotta protect it.
Item 25, looking ahead, due to the canceled school day on Tuesday, February 18th, uh, school board must have said whether to make up that day later in the school year or not to formally amend the school calendar.
Still have April.
We still do have April yet, so I think we'll just wait until that happens.
Let's get through April and make sure.
I just remember two years ago, Friday, April 13th, 13 inches of snow. Yeah, so I.
So let's not push our luck.
Yeah.
Don't put your shovels away.
Um, do we know, do we have enough instructional hours built in already?
Yes. So for all grade levels, we are above the minimum.
If we didn't make it up.
So.
Okay, so hopefully no more of that.
Okay, item 26, dates and events of interest. You want me to read through these, Kevin, or just, just look at them, they're there?
Looking at them.
Public knowledge.
Well, again, special meeting Thursday night and again, uh, Rum River North Joint Powers Proposal. Getting approval of the minutes of tonight's for the, uh, four-day week application. And then just next steps that we have to do for our school board vacancy. Kindergarten Roundup, I'm eager to see our results on Thursday, March 27th. To my knowledge right now, we have at least 27 kindergartners, but we'd sure like to have more because if you look at a senior graduation class of up to 38 and you're graduating all 38, uh, because that, they're, yeah, so we wanna have a better indication of what our kindergarten numbers are for next fall. This Friday ends, end of quarter three. And then, uh, deadline for alumni award nominations, I also believe that's connected to who sometimes graduation keynote speakers. Both in the earlier reports was mentioned that yearbooks are being finished up and final orders are being accepted through next Monday, Monday, March 31st. And it is testing season, ACTs and MCAs. And again, Saturday, April 26th, Grand March will be here at school. I believe the dinner dance at prom is at the Event Center in Mora. And then post-prom is at the, somebody told me.
Grand, or the Urban.
Urban Air Trampoline Lock-In. And transportation will be, is taken care of to and from that. And then when they come back, they do their door prizes and drawings. Legislative dates. Uh, next Monday is the eye break, but more importantly, at the end of that week is policy bill deadline. And that's like when you look at the MSBA, MREA, you're looking for companion bills. You wanna see, is there something traveling through both the House and Senate? So we'll see what survives after April 4th. Then obviously, once those bills get through, then they correlate the budget deadlines, April 11th. Easter Passover break and a lot of those legislators sometimes have. Easter Passover break and a lot of those legislators sometimes have town hall meetings when they come back to their own zip codes. Sometimes they have town hall meetings. And the goal is for the legislative session to be done on May 19th.
Any questions, comments on any of them dates? As listed. Item 27, committee work session meeting dates. Do we need to plan anything yet?
Well, I, I'll reach out to both our organized groups and get the partially when we explored the interest-based collective, that had to have agreement from OEA and the boards. I'll double check. If we want to do that, I'll check with the checklist and timelines and do that. Sometimes a lot of groups want to wait till the legislative session is done. Some don't, but if we're doing the interest-based collective, I think we want to try lock in some future dates.
That we do.
So I'll try to ask them for information, hopefully even by as soon as this Thursday.
Good. Does anybody have any other?
I do not.
Board members?
No, no other at all.
Any other over?
All right. Look for motion for item 29.
Motion to adjourn at 7:29.
Motion by member Smith. I get a second.
Second.
Second by member Schroeder. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. This meeting is adjourned.